Good afternoon and welcome to the September 23rd Joint Authority and Canal Board Meeting. I'm John Kummel, Chair of the Authority, and I'm pleased as always to be joined by my fellow trustees, Nakandry McKibben, excuse me, Bell Boni and trainer. Trustee Pacentey has been excused as is clear. Our meeting's being held again today via video conference. A limited number of Gill and his team members are present in our executive office in White Plains. Other members of the staff will participate as well via video. And as always, the meeting's been duly noticed as required by open meetings law. And with that, I call this session to order. We've all had the opportunity to review the materials in advance, which included an agenda for this meeting. Unless there's any questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve that agenda as presented. And a second there, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Well, the agenda calls for a typical executive session. Frankly, we've spent the last four plus hours in committee meetings this morning, and have had a robust discussion on a wide range of topics, which will be reported out earlier. So there's no need for us frankly to convene an executive session on any topics of the moment. So we will continue in open session. Again, as is customary, we've all been polled prior to the meeting regarding any potential conflicts. And unless there's last, any last minute changes, I'll assume everyone's responded appropriately. And with that, I'm pleased to introduce our President and CEO, Mr. Gill, for his regular update. Gil, the floor and podium is yours.
Thank you very much Chairman Kummel. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, management staff, and those in the public who are listening and participating in today's Board of Trustees meeting. I am pleased to report that the state of NiPA is good. On our first slide, as you can see here, as always, we keep the health and safety of our employees as our number one priority during this pandemic crisis. We now have a very detailed playbook on how to operate in this environment based on all of the experience that we have gathered today. And this is akin to a valve that we can loosen the valve or we can tighten the valve depending on the situation. In fact, the next slide, we had a little bit of a COVID flare up in NiPA and Canals in the months of August and September. And we were able to implement our game plan, contact tracing, isolating those who were determined to be positive, quarantining those who are exposed, and very rapidly drove down the numbers across our organization. So a basically a manifestation of how we were able to implement our playbook. Next slide please, Daniela. So now, as you have heard, back in July, we're slowly but surely, very methodically returning employees back to work as we unpause our capital and maintenance program, both at Canals and at NiPA. You will see here, the inside that blue box, the gradual trend line, where we're about 2,300, 2,400 total, if you add up Canals and NiPA. And so, and you'll see a breakdown under the kind of org chart looking graphic there below that blue box on who's part time, who's full time, who's working, continue to work remotely. October 5th is going to be a big day for us. That will be the next time that we bring on additional employees, about, you know, 258 full-time, part-time employees since May. And we are doing that methodically based on the playbook and the game plan that we have. So I'm pleased to report that the team has been really managing this process successfully. Next slide, please.
What Gil, what's the expectation going forward in terms of all 2,300, 2,400? You expect everybody to ultimately make their way back? Or is there a new normal that will perpetuate the work from home or remote offsite interaction?
I think, Mr. Chairman, it's fair to say that even after we reach a point where there is a vaccine and effective therapeutics, that there will be a new normal where a portion of our employees will substantially work from home and will come when needed to our project sites or our offices. Some will work part-time and some, of course, need to be at our sites on shifts five days a week, even seven days a week. But the exact proportion, that is still to be determined as we gain more experience along the way. Prior to an effective vaccine and therapeutics, I predict that it will probably attract this pace that we're having now, slowly but surely, we're going to be adding jobs, employees methodically. And our philosophy has always been that the job is the demand. So it's a demand pool, pull. So wherever we need them, that's how we're going to prioritize how to bring the employees back. Okay, the next slide, again, I'm happy to report in the management team, both at NiPA and Canals, really have done a great job in uncausing our capital work. Almost 80% of what we had in our original budget back in December that you approved will be able to execute this year. And all of those projects that we have ID'd as to be unpaused have been cleared to be unpaused and start working, as you can see there at the bottom, you know, almost 70% have actually restarted. The others are going to start very shortly. But this is really an improvement from when we reported back to you in July. And that's credit to our employees, the men and women of the Power Authority Canals.
Will we be able to catch up to original timelines? Or have timelines just inherently been extended because of COVID?
For the almost 80%, 70%, we can catch up. The others will have to be pushed onto, you know, 2021 and beyond.
But I'm saying, will we be able to recover in 2021 and get back on track? Or just inherently, some of these deadlines have just been kicked out?
Some of the deadlines will be kicked out. There will be very few capital projects where, you know, we will recover the full schedule from when those projects were originally deployed. The last, next slide, please. Just want to give you a view of what the fourth quarter will look like. What are the key activities to look forward to, especially from the vantage of the board? In October, we will conduct a strategy workshop with the board to finalize our NiPA 2030 strategic plan. There will be a follow-up of that in November. And there is also a finance committee meeting scheduled in November. And in December, where you approve our budget and approve our strategic plan, you know, that will be done in the regular meeting in December. And just for your information, there is also a scheduled audit committee meeting in December. So that's my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So before we let you go, just give us your view of how well the organization has responded to the crisis, now that you're able to reflect on it six months later, six plus months later? And maybe more importantly, how ready we are for the next one? Whether it be the next wave or whatever comes our way and the lessons that we've learned?
I am very pleased on how the employees and how NiPA and Canals responded to the emergency. All the work that we have invested in our emergency management plan, our pandemic management plan that we dusted off back in January, February, were very helpful. I would like to give thanks and acknowledge our information technology group. They really were able to convert our mode of operation to remote in a matter of days during the height of the pandemic. As you know, we were able to execute a large bond deal in a very difficult market in March and April. And as you can see in the playbook that where I started today, we have codified all the learnings and experience that we have so that we are now much better prepared to address if there is a second wave or second wave plus a flu. And as we discussed in our finance committee meeting earlier, but for the impact of COVID and a regulatory outcome coming from the regional transmission expansion planning process of the PJM interconnection RTO. But for those two, I would say uncontrollable events, we have been and we continue to track to our plan. And that again is credit to the men and women of the Power Authority and the Canal Corporation.
Agreed. Kudos to you and the team and the entire organization. Any other questions for Gil? Thanks Gil.
Thank you.
Joe, I last saw you, whatever it was, a couple of weeks ago, as we christened the new icebreaker. I see you got some pictures of that, of the boat at least, in your report. So the floor is yours.
Thank you Chairman Kummel and trustees, staff and the general public. Yeah, you can see that the, so far to date, that our metrics for all of our performance, our key performance metrics around generation, transmission, environmental, and our DART rate, which we pay close attention to obviously for safety, are indeed still in the green. We are ramping up some work and, you know, unfortunately, we are still, we're not at zero anymore for the DART rate. We have had a couple of stand downs to make sure that as people ramp up that we are focused. There's enough distractions in the world, and we're just trying to make sure folks are focused. But very good rate for us, we're very proud of it, and we're going to hope to continue that trend for the rest of the year. Unless there's any questions on that, we do have kind of a fun item here that we did have an opportunity to commission, our new Niagara vessel, the Breaker 2. It's a beautiful boat and it was a fun event. I did see our chairman there and Lieutenant Governor Kathy Hochul was able to christen this vessel. It was a $5 million investment, but it's very important work that the Breaker 2 does. It's, it has a dual purpose for us. It actually does a lot of the work at the Ice Boom site, which is put in place to maintain the flows of ice in the winter time from being too excessive. And that prevents shore erosion, flooding, and of course, keeps the intakes free and clear so we can take water for power generation, which is obviously very important for winter heating loads and so forth. And it also has the ability to go down the river to the grassland pool toward the intakes to do the actual breaking of the ice. So it's got a reinforced hull and can break the ice in a little bit different style than the other vessels that are there. It works in coordination with our friends at Ontario Power Gen and Niagara operations to make sure that, again, the intakes are free and clear of ice and we have continuous flow. So very cool event, we're very proud of it. It's on tour right now and it is being shaken down by our staff and being trained. And it was a really a great event to see our chairman there, Lieutenant Governor christen the boat and see something that, you know, really represents what we're trying to do to keep our resilient Niagara operations. With that, I believe that concludes all the items I have, if any questions on operations.
Joe, on your KPIs, in my seven, eight years, I don't think I've seen consistent green, let alone a couple of meetings in a row. I'm a bit surprised that we've been able to accomplish that under these circumstances. Surprised not in a, with any negative connotation to what do you, you know, give credit in terms of the organization's ability to execute at such a high level throughout the crisis?
I would say in short, it's focus. I think, you know, we're very focused on everything that we're doing because we have to pay close attention. When COVID struck, as I mentioned before, we took a very, I would say, strict and literal interpretation of what we should start and stop doing. And when we did that, there was work that was ongoing that could not be stopped suddenly. And we made sure that we had adequate staffing and oversight in those areas to make sure that those projects were shut down in an appropriate way. And we did, took a very similar stance. It wasn't purely about the economics as we ramped up the work. It was very strategic from a making sure we have the eyes in the field and the right health and safety experts and supervisors in the field as we started up work to make sure it was done safely. And we had mishaps and, you know, there were some steps and stumbles on the way in doing that because again, people are very distracted. But I believe the level of focus and attention that people have spent on because of the COVID crisis and other pressure points throughout in the world today, that we were able to make sure that everybody had the right mentality around standing down, taking a breath, taking a view of what's going on and making sure everybody stays safe before we move forward. You know, I think it's going to be a challenge to keep again, those numbers at zero that are supposed to be at zero as this goes on. But, you know, that's always going to be our target, that's always going to be our aspiration. So the team knows that and we just keep communicating. And I think too, as Gil pointed out, as we do the return to work, it's going to be a lot of making sure that we are taking a focused approach on where we're doing that to make sure the right eyes are on the right projects at all times. So I think it's the focus.
Well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joe? All right, Sarah, it looks like you squeezed 10 pages of slides on to three or four. And you're giving us a little razzle-dazzle with the red yellows and greens.
That's right, that's right. I'm sorry, I'm not as consistent as Joe.
Well, you're consistent with Christmas tree.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Keeping it lively. But this was articulated by Gil and by you Chairman and Joe. Despite the fact that we have had a lot of headwinds with COVID, we still are doing well and have managed things well. You need to leave, I'm in the middle of a meeting. No, no. Okay.
It wouldn't be a virtual world 2020 without a new rock in my path.
Yes, yes. Probably wants an ice cream cone or something, so not getting it now.
Getting live, bringing ice cream.
Exactly. In any, in any case, we are missing our expected value target that was set at the budget last year, 335 million for the merchant gross margin currently were projected to hit about 300 million. If you look at it in the scheme of things, that's about a 10% miss. But all things considered, I think, successful relative to, again, what we were facing. We had the third warmest winter on record since 1895, which had an impact on energy prices as well as load because of supply and demand. COVID had a significant impact on load as well with the reduction of almost 15% at the height of April and May. And we are seeing some of the prices stabilize and load come back. But clearly, you can't make up for what the impact was to our merchant margin in the first half of, half of the year. So we continue to monitor it, we continue to hedge and look to next year to ensure that we have greater stability around our, around those line items. We didn't rest to your, to your question, Chairman, how are we supporting our customers? We're about 70%, over 70% allocated of the hydro programs that we have to offer our customers and continue to support the capital commitments and job retention in the state. I look forward to further, the furthering the economic recovery in New York. Next slide.
And our customers are doing, it appears surprisingly well. I don't mean that with any negative connotation for our customers, but very pleased to see them standing tall and that's great to hear.
I mean, COVID, as was flagged in the slides that Gil showed, has had an impact, obviously, on our construction portfolio. And while we worked as much as possible remotely and are looking to continue to execute contracts, which represents the pipeline that we'll be implementing physically in the coming years, we are behind in our revenue stream there because we took essentially four month pause and it took time, as Joe flagged, to recommence with our contractors and get them back on the sites. But we're working vigorously to try to accelerate those projects and timelines where possible. Similarly, for Evolve, we are, we paused those projects but are back on track to support getting 40 public charging ports into the state this year. And next, next meeting, we'll share some of the photos. But yesterday, we had the grand opening with Lieutenant Governor of our first public electric vehicle charging stations in La Grangeville. It was a really exciting, a really exciting event considering all the work that Evolve's been doing. And we're on track still for New York Energy Manager, which is our digital platform. So again, a reinforcement of the value and the ability to deliver value from digital. Next slide. Again, we continue to, to your question Chairman Kummel, to identify ways to better serve our customers through our account center and ensure that we're improving the services as well as the communication with them. Additionally, you'll see that, to your question about how we responded for COVID, NiPA was above the national average and above, even further above the JD Powers Eastern Utilities responses. The question is to rating your utilities response. So that to me is very encouraging and a testament to the work that our company has been doing. And finally, we haven't stopped. You'll see that since March, we have received capital commitments of over $1.5 billion, job commitments of over 52,000, and supported awards of our hydropower to 70 businesses and organizations across the state. Happy to answer any questions.
Kudos on the customer satisfaction score. Make sure the absolute numbers do it justice, is what, a 10% spread between the other Eastern Utilities and NiPA. So that's a very meaningful differential. So very well done, kudos to you and the team, especially under these circumstances when you typically only get the complaints. So great work there. Anyone else for Sarah, want ice cream or anything?
I'm all for the ice cream, but Sarah, one question I had for you, because, you know, as a not entirely distinction between your business and Joe's business in terms of, you know, what must be done, yours is more, you know, sort of, customers don't have to do a lot of what you, the services that you provide. And your expectation, we've navigated up until now pretty well, we won't meet again until December, is your expectation is that you're going to see pick up in activity going forward after, you know, sort of things slowing down dramatically during the last six months? And so you're confident that you're, you know, our customers who have seemed pretty healthy up until now? Again, this is just up until July will, and well, there should be an uptick in terms of their engagement with you on some of the programs that you're pursuing, and that's what you expect to see and so.
Yeah, so I would say that on the construction side, obviously, we paused. And so what you're seeing in terms of the utility revenues is a reflection of that because we get milestone payments based on when we reach certain construction milestones. That being said, our larger customer base for energy efficiency and DERs, distributed energy resources is the governmental sector and including the MTA, OGS docs, et cetera. And so they're clearly under some level of constraint considering the impact of COVID. We continue to talk to them, they're very committed to meeting the goals of the state in terms of carbon reduction and everything else that has been outlined by the CLCPA. But we continue to think about ways to advance our revenue streams, both from NiPA's perspective as well as deliver value to our customers in more capital light ways. So to answer your question, it's TBD as we see the budget process appropriations and the impacts on our customers. I think we will see some level of impact on the pipeline that we had before. But again, we're consistently working with our customers and identifying projects that provide bottom line value to them with, and that have on bill financing and then are also supporting, again, the environmental and sustainability goals of the state.
Thank you.
Anything else for Sarah? Terrific, well, good work Sarah, appreciate that. You and your team continue to knock it out of the park, so well done. All right, next up, in terms of our finance story, we got back to back here. Adam Barsky, our CFO, and then Tracy McKibben, our Finance Committee Chair, will effectively report out on a very robust Finance Committee meeting to start our day this morning. Adam will give us a little drive-by on where we are, and then Tracy will report out on numerous actions and recommendations that came out of the meeting itself. So Adam, your overview, please.
Sure, and as you mentioned, we had a good detailed discussion of the current year results and year-end forecast and variance analysis at the Finance Committee meeting. So I would just summarize the discussion we had there, which is that the year-to-date actual is a net loss of $18 million, we're forecasting end of the year, a $26 million net loss as our higher probability expected case at this time, given what we know on a conservative basis, that is within a range that could go $30 million in either direction, given some of the uncertainties and volatilities that we continue to face. We expect that range or band to narrow as we get towards the end of the year. So by the next update, we'll have a more narrow band and discussion around that. Of the $76 million major variance that we have in the, our EBITDA or operating income, 59 million of that was detailed and laid out as being attributable to the COVID impact, or 77% of that, of that variance. And the other major item or driver of the variance also was unforeseen, unexpected, was the ruling regarding the RTEP charge associated with our HTTP line, which has also been fully discussed in detail. And I would just highlight those as the two big main underlying drivers. On the other side of the coin, while we do have a objective in that loss, important to point out that our balance sheet remains very strong, our liquidity is strong, our high quality AA credit ratings are intact, and our underlying, underlying business fundamentals for which we're tracking our financials remain on target and as we move forward and merge from the pandemic. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain that.
I think we're probably questioned out from earlier this morning, but don't want to, you know, any, be too quick. Kudos, as you just said, we're in a great position coming out the backside of at least this initial storm. So kudos to you and the team for managing our funding, our financing, our balance sheet position and keeping the guard, everyone between the operational guardrails. So very well done.
Thank you. And as you've mentioned, it is really a true team effort throughout, not only the finance part of the organization, but the rest of the organization's people rally around to respond and address emerging issues as they've arisen. So it's really been a true team effort. So I do appreciate everybody's participation in that.
Challenging six months, but I think we all feel even better about our ability to tackle what comes next. So again, well done. Tracy, you've got a substantive report, the many actions that were taken during our meeting earlier today.
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee met this morning and we adopted the minutes and received four staff reports that concluded into a number of items that we're submitting to the full board for approval. Eight of the items before the trustees for adoption regarding our operations and then one additional item regarding the canal work. In total, nine items that were before the trustees for adoption. The canal one is about $22.6 million for funding to support the operations of the canal. Again, Again, previously approved by, by the board. The next one is $13.3 million of our legal operations for licensing that around our St. Lawrence FDR Power Project. And then five items under our utility operations totaling $136.8 million around our replacing the base shifter upgrades to our 13 generating units, as well as implementation of our T-LIM tower coating in central New York and Western New York. Individually, 25 million, 30 million, 24.8 million and 27.7 million and 29.3 million. And then the next, under our commercial operations, the committee submit to the full board the awarding of contracts, a total two, two items for approval totaling about $160 million, $150 million regarding our construction services contracts and then $10 million around construction services, again, around our LED, street lighting and energy efficiency efforts. I asked, I submit these and I ask for a motion to adopt all of these items from the Finance Committee.
I'll take Tracy. So moved. Great. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Michael. In total, my recall is there's around 350 million in action. So very, very meaningful, the LED project being almost half of that, but a lot of significant continuing investments we're making across the state. So unless there's any other questions, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions carried. Thanks very much, Tracy, for the report and your work this morning and sharing that meeting. Finance was followed by governance. And while we ultimately agreed to defer action on the recommendation for specific funding, it was a great discussion and one with enthusiastic support for the work. Dennis, you want to give us an overview of our, our discussions there?
Well, it just the, well, the Governance Committee met today and adopted a consent agenda consistent of minutes and reports regarding procurement, real estate and ethics and compliance and enterprise resilience. The committee also talked about the, the NIPR's and Canal Corporation's racial justice and equity plan, which aims to move the authority towards a more diverse, equitable and inclusive workforce, increase the commitment to environmental justice, underserved communities and increase the participation of minority and women owned businesses in the supply chain. The plan will ensure that NIPA's culture, behaviors and actions demonstrates that diversity, equity and inclusions are a priority, foster diversity in the supply chain and engage staff in expanding opportunities for students in undeserved communities. The, the trustees believe in the board believes that we need a more bigger and bolder approach. And we're going to take another look at it in December.
Yeah, thanks, Dennis. Yeah, a lot of great work's been done under Nancy Harvey's leadership. Kudos to her for her appointment as the, the quarterback of this initiative. Victoria Kyla gave us a couple of great reports. And as Dennis just said, we're incredibly supportive of their high energy and passionate work to date and look forward to an additional update in December, at which time we expect to more formally endorse and, and support the plan that they've begun to develop and lean in to en- ensure we have best of class outcomes consistent with all that NIPA is about. So kudos to Nancy and her appointment and her team for the work that's been done to date. And thanks very much, Dennis, for helping steer the ship from our standpoint. The next scheduled item was a report on DM safety in the interest of time. And to ensure we give that very positive report, it's due, we're going to defer that to our next meeting. So our next action item is approval of the consent agenda, which as usual was a full read. Unless anyone has any questions, there was nothing atypical included in the consent agenda. Would otherwise ask for a motion to approve the materials as presented.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is passed. All right, we're going to conclude with two mixed emotion moments. Two people have contributed significantly to the success of NIPA. Over the years, we want to recognize and ensure there's public appreciation for not only their efforts, but more importantly, the outcomes that they delivered to, might make NIPA that much better. So first up to recognize Harry Francois, Joe Kessler, you've got some comments as well as a commendation.
Thank you, Chairman Komehle. Yes, bittersweet indeed. I'm here, actually, there's a resolution that are in the materials that I, I'm going to paraphrase because the, the number of whereas is to account for the accomplishments of this individual are just incredible. So if the board indulged me, I would speak from the heart on some of these things. This is a commendation for Harry Francois, who is retiring as Regional Manager of Western New York, which we all generally know as the Niagara Power Project, crown jewel of our fleet. And it's a 300 member workforce after 30 years of service to this state, eight years being as the regional manager. Harry is just one of the most aspiring and revered leaders of the Niagara Power Project has, has ever had and was very instrumental in advancing all the governor's recharge New York programs and other programs that Niagara is a, a key element in funding. And if you go back in the history of the Niagara Power Project and people who are, are from there and intimate with the work that's done there, they've been undergoing a significant amount of capital work since really the, the early 90s. And Harry's had his stamp in, in a leadership role on virtually every project that has happened since then as they modernized that entire project and then kicked off the Next Generation Niagara Initiative that's going on today. He's the kind of individual that I can speak, when I, I started at the Niagara Power Project, was one of the first people I met. He's the one who gave me the tour. He was my mentor, my friend. Still is my friend, still is my mentor from a personal perspective as well. And he was one of those guys that if you were troubleshooting a project at the project, at Niagara Power Project, and you saw Harry coming down the gallery, you, you got a sense of relief. We were going to get this fixed. His unfettered optimism and friendliness and kindness and willingness to share with people is just something really to be admired. And all with a, a complete sense of humility, never wanting the spotlight, making clear headed decisions on all technical matters and really personnel matters as well. He should be credited also with working very closely with our IBW Local 2104. There have been leadership changes over the years in his tenure there in those 30 years, and he's had different responsibilities, but always kept a very close working relationship with the working staff right at the grassroots, getting down with them in the work, oily, greasy with everybody, just in making sure that everything was done safely. And he is, he is to be credited for the significant reduction in the dart rate over the past several years under his leadership at Niagara. From a broader perspective, he's the manifestation of the American dream. A guy who was raised in Haiti, was moved here as a teenager to Brooklyn. English is a second language, found his way through high school, very successful at, at Pratt Institute, where he got his Bachelor's of Engineering and showed a great effort overcoming a really hard scrabble life. Learned English, drove a cab, did all the things that he needed to do to, you know, pick himself up in, in, in America and really make a career for himself. Just incredible. And he, he always gave back as well. He, he was, he's always, he was recruited in 1991 from NIPA as a member of the National Society of Black Engineers. And just recently, a few months ago, last fall, he was giving back and then working on one of their panels to, to talk about, you know, ways that people can get more involved in the energy industry and, and get an exposure and what you need to do to be successful. So always willing to give back, you know, personally and professionally. So with that, Mr. Francois provided strong support for NIPA's environmental justice and STEM activities. He was always out in the, in the public whenever the Community Affairs folks or EJ folks were in Western New York. Harry was always out, right out in front, making sure he was walking the walk and demonstrating to his staff what it takes to give back and has been an inspiration to, to many people in the community that way as well. So whereas Mr. Francois has brought honor to the power authority in countless ways and building upon its reputation for excellence and meeting the energy needs of Western New York and New York State and being responsible corporate citizen in the highest order. And whereas Mr. Francois's decades of dedication and merit to service will long be remembered by NIPA colleagues who are privileged to work with him. Now therefore, it be resolved that the trustees of the power authority of the state of New York convey their deepest gratitude and appreciation to Harry Francois for all that he has accomplished and extend best wishes to him and his wife Nerla as they embark on their next chapter of their lives in Georgia, as well as their two wonderful daughters, Ariel and Brianna, Bonchance, Monomi, and all the best for a happy, healthy and rewarding future. Thank you.
Very well done, Joe. Yeah, applause for sure. And before we enable Harry to say a few words, I just do want to formally ask for a motion to approve the resolution that Joe just put on the table.
Don't move.
All right, collective motion and collective second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I won't even ask for any nays. Never happen. Harry, great to see your face, long distance and virtual as it is. But opportunity for you to share a few thoughts as you, you wind down this chapter with, with the authority.
And thank you, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Joe. I want to thank all of you for taking the time to recognize me during this special meeting. I really appreciate it and this will be with me for the rest of my life. I had a great career with, with NIPA and met a lot of wonderful people as well. Some still here, some retired and some we probably have to meet somewhere else down the road. But for sure, looking at this proclamation that I received yesterday, what I received yesterday, this is overwhelming. This is a lot, a lot of accomplishment here. And there is no way one person can accomplish this alone. We are for sure, without other people, this would not be possible. I want to thank for sure the Board of Trustees for approving a lot of projects over the years to make things possible for me. The EMC team has been wonderful, supporting me over the years, the engineering department and all the Niagara staff, union and management. So really, 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 I really appreciate everything you've done for me, raising a family with NIPA. And this company did so much that I would never, never, never forget in my life. And it's been so great. It's been so great. And in, in, in additions, I like to say a couple of things there to, basically special thanks that I like to pass on to our chairman is always there for us, whichever, whenever we have an activities in Buffalo. Or if we're dealing with a customer, our chairman always there. I will miss him. I like the voice too, the tone of his voice, strong voice. Hopefully I can mimic that, mimic him, but I cannot do. He's, he's unique. Thank you, John Komehle, for all your support over the years, Gil. Thank you for your support, Joe Kessler, Phil Troyer, Carol Gagarin, Justin Dreskol. I know without all your support over the years, there's no way things would be possible for me because I met quite a few challenges over time. I call, you're always responding. You're always been there for me. So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. This will be on my wall in my office and in Georgia. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bravo.
Thank, thank you, Harry. You've given us so much. It's, the proclamation is certainly a small token, but know that the, the thoughts are, are deep and incredibly genuine. You've been the best and exemplify all that there is about NIPA. So thank you for everything you've done and best wishes as you turn the page to sunny days ahead.
Mr. Chair, can I comment? Just a quick comment. Harry obviously onboarded me when I first came onto the board and I did the, he gave me the tour of Niagara. And I have to say, I thoroughly enjoyed it and you made me very excited about joining, joining NIPA as Board of Trustees with employees like you. And you were so humble and just so warm. And I'm, I'm very pleased to hear you're moving south. I think we talked a little bit about that when I was there. So again, you know, your smiley face and the, the tour that you gave me gave me confidence starting out early through my onboarding process, that we had some really good employees at NIPA.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That's too much pressure. Harry, thanks for everything, buddy. One more round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you've done.
Thanks.
Rob, when the, before the meeting started, you and I were talking football. And as a New England fan, you've had to endure a few key losses going into this season and had to replace some important parts. Unfortunately, we've had a real key loss on your team this year with Casey Carnes moving on to the Tennessee Valley Authority. But again, same, similar to Harry, while his time with us was shorter, his impact and contributions were incredibly significant. So Rob, to give Casey his due and more public and formal recognition, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Chairman Komehle. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, everyone. Casey, I'm not sure if you'll like this, but it's sort of like Tom Brady, if I can use the football analogy. You know, we trained him and, and he's passed along. But it's always a good opportunity for, for him and certainly for you. So I am extremely honored today, and, and I promise to make this brief, to submit a resolution to the board to truly recognize Casey and his tremendous service and contributions to NIPA and the success. But as he starts his new journey and his new career, and he is in a new chapter, which is very exciting. But rather than reading a two-page resolution, I was just going to highlight some of those. And really for everyone here in our public folks, is really talk about some of the major accomplishments. So Casey, I first off want to thank you before I do that for making a virtual presence here. You look very dapper. So Casey's there. So thanks, thanks for joining and hanging in there. In terms of background, Casey's been with NIPA for nearly four years as the Vice President and Chief Information Security Officer. He, Casey established a solid foundation. He built a great team. It leveraged the talent that was there and continued to flourish and, and helped to develop them directly. He helped institute really critical services, and I'll explain what that means, but also key technologies that help to support not only cyber. And I'm not sure if anybody really knew that Casey really owned IT operations, which really is infrastructure and what we call production applications. So he had quite a big remit. And when I came along, I said, hey, Casey, can you kind of take a little bit more? And he did. But he, he did a great job and not only to advance the cyberspace, but his additive responsibilities. So Casey, for that, I'm very thankful. Casey led the development of very clear, and I think this is the hallmark for NIPA, a very clear cyber vision and prioritized multi-year strategy and an execution roadmap, which we've been executing for a number of years now, of the critical technologies and really the cyber capabilities that really have helped us to not only enable, but protect our evolving and expanding digital ecosystem. Casey, you promoted very close collaboration between IT and OT, which we refer to OT, across the enterprise and all the sites. And it helped to develop a better, frankly, a more constructive relationship, which now has, has really worked out very well. So thank you for that. You developed strong and deep external relationships and partnerships in New York State on a federal, with federal agencies, numerous in industry partners. So many, I started to list them, and so I'm going to give you a sample. But as you guys get overwhelmed with the list, I'll stop at some point. Department of Energy, Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, numerous national information sharing analysis centers, we call them ISACS, Large Public Power Council, the American Public Power Association, EPRI. And I'll stop there. There are many more. But it, he really developed those relationships to be able to share threat information, insights, best practices and to actually develop centers of excellence. Now, he didn't do this from a passive perspective. He did it from a very active perspective. And what I mean by that, he, he led, co-chared, facilitated and advised with all these partners. And I think that's helped to build a brand of recognition for NIPA as well as himself. with all these partners. And I think that's helped to build a brand of recognition for NIPA as well as himself. Casey led the engagement in cybersecurity exercises and workshops. He is very adamant about this with government agencies and energy sectors, being able to simulate, not just talk about hypotheticals, but actually get some hands on and understand the impact to the grid and be able to develop mitigation and remediation plans to protect the data. That's really unique in the industry and we'll continue on with, with that endeavor. And another point is really around Casey being an evangelist. Casey promoted programs and campaigns continuously to educate NIPA, not only the employees, our customers and our stakeholders in, in the state grade state of New York on the involving risks and how to avoid them with proper hygiene and discipline. I don't think there's one meeting where Casey's been in and leading where he didn't talk about cyber or remind people to raise the awareness. I will fondly remember, and I think most of you will fondly remember Casey as the cyber guy. And Casey, what is this? The cyber warrior with the shield and the, and the sword? If you all remember the posters and the campaigns. And I appreciate the fact that he took on that role because it really helped to raise the awareness and actually again, built his brand. Overall, Casey, your leadership, your expertise, your partnership, put NIPA on the map, not only on the map, but leading. And I'm very proud of that, both for cybersecurity and beyond with the great state of New York and the national electric sector. Casey, be proud of your legacy in leading NIPA in a better, a protected, stronger and industry-leading position going forward. I can say with all confidence that the entire NIPA community thanks you and will miss you. And we wish you and Kelly and the kids great success in your physical move to warmer climate and hopefully challenges that will fulfill your aspirational need, aspirational desires. So Casey, heartfelt thanks to you personally. I know we, we had our goodbyes as an organization, but I'll say that very publicly. So with that said, Chairman, I'll turn it back to you and the rest of the board.
Thanks very much, Rob, for great comments that speak well, better than any of us, certainly as to all Casey brought and contributed to an, to our organization. As always, you always hope to leave someplace better than you found it. And he did so in a very, very notable and significant way. And before I turn the floor over to Casey for a few comments, I'd again ask for a motion to enthusiastically endorse and support the resolution acknowledging Casey's wonderful and, you know, highly committed service to NIPA and frankly, the state of New York.
So moved.
So moved.
Second, it's all buried in there. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Casey, before I give Mike a chance, please, the floor is yours to share your thoughts as one door closes and the next one swings wide open.
Oh, thank you so much. I mean, humbling, humbling opportunity to be here with you today. And, you know, we do not triumph as an individual and a team effort. And so, you know, kind of like Harry said, it takes all the people that I worked with at NIPA, my team members, coworkers. Obviously the unparalleled work that I got from, you know, not just the senior leadership, but executive management and everyone on the board. I was truly second to none. So I have no doubt that NIPA will continue to lead the way in cybersecurity and resilience since I know the depth and level of skill that accompanies that true passion to serve and deliver every day on that excellence that NIPA is known for, that they, individuals that you guys have still absolutely are driven to make a difference for NIPA and for New York. So I just ultimately a wonderful place. I love the innovation, the opportunity and the, the forward drive of New York to, you know, enable and push the industry forward. You know, I personally thank Rob, I, Gil and, and Mr. Balboni, especially with the support and the guidance and, and governance. It was just second to none. That's absolutely it. And, you know, it's, it's crazy that it can almost bring you to tears, but I, I thank you all.
Well, we can't thank you enough said for not only sharpening our focus, but sharpening our saw all the more as well. Michael, I'm sure you have some thoughts you want to share.
Very, very quickly. And then we're at the end of the board. But so in this cybersecurity world, the skill sets of Casey Carnes are worth millions. This is a guy who could go out and basically get any job that he wanted to in the private sector with the biggest name companies, multi-billion dollar companies, multinational. But he's one of those guys that combines intelligence, competence, experience and a passion to serve. And there, there are backstories that nobody really kind of knows, but, and I can't really share too many details. But, you know, Casey, when asked to step up for another state agency that had suffered a breach, took his team and went in and embedded themselves for weeks. This is, it was not an instant of hesitation. And Casey is recognized within the state of New York as, as truly one of the leaders in cybersecurity for the entire state government. In addition to which, I've had the chance to travel international with Casey and I've seen him interact with other cybersecurity professionals. The Tennessee Valley Authority is getting a great asset, but Casey has left in his wake a tremendously strong foundation of security for the largest public utility in the United States. Casey, I can't thank you more, but you're not getting out of my network. Uh-uh, no way. We'll stay lots in touch. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Michael. And I know you speak for all of us. One final time, Casey, thanks so very much. And our collective best wishes for what we know will be tremendous success in the years ahead for you and your family. Yep, round of applause for sure. That brings our meeting to a close. Gil, unless you have any final thoughts, we're ready to adjourn. Any pearls of wisdom from you before we do so?
I don't know that it's pearls of wisdom, but I, I, I join the board and, and on behalf of all the employees of NIPA and Canals, I again want to thank Harry and Casey. All the best to you. May you only go from strength to strength. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. With that, as you saw earlier from Gil, we'll have a busy fourth quarter as we focus on strategy and business plan, as well as our customary board duties. Our next formal joint meeting of the authority and Canals is scheduled for December 9th. But we will all have an active and running dialogue between now and then. That said, I'd ask everyone, I mean, I thank everyone for their time and attention for the last five plus hours. Much appreciate your healthy substantive and meaningful engagement. And with that, would request a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Don't move.
And there's a second embedded in that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I know no opposition. Thanks so much, everyone. A great series of meetings. Appreciate everyone's time, effort and energy. Keep up the good work and we'll chat again soon. Have a great day. Enjoy the sunshine.
Thank you.
Thank you too.